Well, good news, yesterday. As I told you yesterday morning, we were going to have an agreement and we got it. Late, as always, but we got it. So now we already have a plan to ban ninety percent of the oil imports in the European Union. At the end of this year, we will be buying ninety percent less. Only some exceptions for the landlocked countries. I think it's a reasonable way out of the discussion. You know, this weekend we have been engaging in long and difficult diplomatic discussions with the ministers and ambassadors. And finally, the leaders arranged their last pending issue. So the Six Packages has been approved. Not only think on the oil ban, think also on three more important banks out to SWIFT. .........
..............................
Well, good news, yesterday. As I told you yesterday morning, we were going to have an agreement and we got it. Late, as always, but we got it. So now we already have a plan to ban ninety percent of the oil imports from the European Union. At the end of this year, we will be buying ninety percent less. Only some exceptions for the landlocked countries. I think it's a reasonable way out of the discussion. You know, this weekend we have been engaging in long and difficult diplomatic discussions with the ministers and ambassadors. And finally, the leaders arranged their last pending issue. So the Six Packages has been approved. Not only think on the oil ban, think also on three more important banks out to SWIFT. Difficulties to the Russian economy in the exchanges with the outer world. So this is another step further, another show of unity. It takes a long time in Europe to discuss and to agree because we require unanimity. But I think that the effort of these last days has been worldwide. And today, we will discuss about defence. How to improve the defence capacities of European Union member states. But remember that defence is a competence of the member states. And the member states created the European Defence Agency, which has the honour of a chair. And the purpose is to try to look at how do we perform. And certainly, we should do more. But we have to do it all together. If every member state increases its expenditure, each one on their side, increasing by X percent what do they already have? It would be a big waste of money. Because we will not correct the duplicities, the duplications that we have. The same thing several times. Neither the gaps, something that we don't have, no one of us. So we have to increase our military expenditure in a coordinated manner. And it's not going to be easy. Because the army, the defence capabilities is the core of the national sovereignty. And to try to pull all the army development will require a lot of political skill. We present this report. I, as President of the European Defence Agency, and the Commission, who has competencies on defence industry, putting together the industry and the army in order to make the European Union stronger in the world, also from a military point of view. Because what we have learned from the Ukrainian war is that it's not enough trade, it's not enough the rule of law, it's not enough to be a good civil power. We need to be also a military power.
Mr Morel, experts say that the agreement reached yesterday is not really effective because the crude oil that is transported by sea can easily be sold elsewhere by Russia. How are you sure that the sanctions are actually weakening?
Certainly, we cannot prevent Russia to sell their oil to someone else. We're not so powerful. But we are the most important client for Russia. They will have to look for another one and certainly they will have to decrease the price. The purpose is for the Russians to get less resources, less financial resources, to feed in the war machine. And this certainly will happen.
Do you think the member states are confluting to the same level in this war?
According with their capacities. According with their capacities and circumstances, yes.
Is Patriarch Kiri in the sanctions list? Can you confirm this?
Listing?
Patriarch Kiri, is he in the sanctions list? Can you confirm this?
Who is in... Ah, the patriarch. Ah, the patriarch. I think so.
You think so?
Well...
Mr Morel...
A week ago, I would have said yes.
I want to ask you, the candidates have four countries, Ukraine, Ukraine, and Georgia. What perspective of these three countries you will discuss this issue the next time?
Yes, there were discussions about it, but let the Commission do their work.
When we will see your assessment?
I suppose on the June Council. Okay, thank you.
Very happy that we already reached a agreement on the sixth package of sanctions. A package that was requested earlier than the previous five. For that reason, which is a part of the energy system. And all the European citizens were neither in the same position. So the most heavy issue was to find a solution for those countries who don't have access to tanks or cars on the coast. Slovenia is fortunate that they have access. So we were looking for a solution for the other ones. It seems that the problem of the energy system, especially sanctions, is still a larger problem. Because the most heavy issue is that it is also a problem. Here, I think, it is possible that those who will find a solution for the quadruple of the border. As for the situation in Ukraine, it seems that sanctions are not... The key question right now is the situation in Dombassu, which the Russian army is preparing for, for the winter season. For the Russian war in the mountains, for the Russian war in the mountains and mountains. And even if the European Union and the West do not want it, if a month doesn't talk about new millionaires from Ukraine, we have to concentrate on helping Ukraine.
But specifically, what will be changed after the previous agreement? What did you say?
It is when it comes to... Even without the cars for Slovenia, those commercial companies that add cars to Slovenia are now preparing to stop adding cars from Russian countries. It is true that if the country does not have enough fuel, there will be no impact on the energy prices at all.
Today, we are talking about the higher price of energy. Why do you think so? But how can you predict the future of the next month? Looking at that, it would be easier for the Ukraine to do something.
Today, the topic that we started yesterday is more important than the number of Russian cars that Europe has acquired. Because it is not just about the quantity, it is about the price. Because if the prices are very high, Russia could produce half of the cars and have more money for financing wars in Ukraine. The more Russia is invading Ukraine, the more the Ukraine destabilizes the global markets, it will increase the prices of cars, including energy, food and so on. So it is the main problem. And I hope that we will find a more concrete solution to that, how to affect the energy prices. Europe has some instruments in its own hands. We are also fighters for some paradigms that were not war, not very high prices. And which is a paradigm of green growth, looking at how much will happen. We have to establish those priorities. And if the European Union finds the right start, then it will stabilize the energy prices.
But what is the prospect of the government's announcement? How carefully is it being presented, is it good or bad?
It is good. We have proposed it to Slovenia in October. Now, the formal inquiries are already made. However, it seems that the European institutions, the European citizens are still looking for formal European inquiries and commercial starts that are in the European market.
Is it possible that Ukraine would need the European Union? Since you are on the last line of the mandate, what do you think is the most important? Today, the European Union, Slovenia, the European Union, Russia, for the import, the prices, the problems? What will be the biggest concern?
It is right now. And here, in the import, including the international war in Ukraine, the war affects everything. It affects the geopolitical coordination of the world. It affects a smaller potential crisis, a more dangerous one, it reduces the additional instability on the South Bank. And here is the focus, because we have to concentrate on Slovenia and European politics. And in that moment, as I said, it is the key skill for establishing the Russian aggressors in the south. Because if Russia is cultivating new lands, it will, on one hand, increase the appetite for the aggressors, on the other hand, politically, the Ukraine loses credibility of the European Union and the West. Which will affect not only the prices on the market, but the protection and energy security. So in Ukraine, it will affect better or worse the import of Europe and Slovenia.
And the last question on the world, your colleagues, what is the political opinion on the European countries?
Yes, it is a proactive policy. As I said, it is a radical point in Ukraine. Here, it is necessary to know many details, it is hard to remember. And concentration on what is a radical point, the ability to concentrate on what is a radical point, Slovenic and European political knowledge, is key to the fact that Slovenia will participate in the issue that we will be in the import of Europe and Slovenia in a fair and good way.
Mr Minister, is there any special question or question for the last goal of the mandate? What are your thoughts on the European Union?
I am very concerned about the import. It is possible that I am the third member of the European world. In that moment, in this European world, no one would have been affected in the mandate between 2004 and 2018. Now, as I am the third member of the European world, I hope that among the people who have met me in the last two years, particularly, the members of the Danube, Finnish, Swedish, Estonia, it is still here. Because in that moment, they are those who are in the right direction of the European government.
Mr Minister, in the next summit group, you will discuss about the candidate status for three countries, for Ukraine, Georgia and Moldova. What will be your position? And how do you think people will have a good time making this political message to these countries? Because three of these countries and our people want to be part of the European Union.
As I have said many times since February this year, the world has changed. We are still capping to understand how important changes are going on. And we came to this situation because from the West and especially from the European Union, there is a lack of ambitions, there is a lack of strategic answers to the strategic challenges. The enlargement of the European Union is one of these possible strategic answers. And when we are speaking about the possibility of the European membership for Moldova, Georgia and especially Ukraine, this is, how to say, hic crodo hic salta. So, the June Council, the European Union will fail to meet the demands of the time, of the history, if the candidate status is not delivered. And to be very frank, during those discussions going on, especially since February this year, I saw a clear division inside the European Union regarding the EU enlargement. There are some countries, I will be very frank, which just want for the aspirant countries to stay in the waiting room or even in front of the waiting room as long as possible and to provide a cheap labor force for the core Europe. I am strongly against this. Europe was built on the other values basis. And I think this is the test. We see now that Sweden and Finland is joining NATO. And this is one of the rare, how to say, bright spots we see in the current situation. And I think that the European Union has to follow this path. The European Union has to change the criteria. Has to return to the, how to say, to the original spirit of the European Union. The European Union was built as a peace process, not only as a single market with prices and economy influencing everything. So I think the June Council will be the moment of truth. Thank you.
Good morning. Are you satisfied with your agreement yesterday?
I think the important news is that the European Union is still united in its purpose. The purpose is to stop Russia's aggressive war in Ukraine. We have two tools with which to do that. One is to support Ukraine militarily, economically. And the second is through the isolation of Putin's economy via sanctions. And yesterday, we agreed on the next, the sixth sanction round, which includes oil. It will cut about two-thirds of Russia's oil exports to the EU, which means two-thirds of the monies that we send to Russia will no longer be sent. And this is very, very good news indeed. The stronger the sanctions, the quicker the war will end.
But as a representative of the parliament?
Once again, I have argued from February 24th that we need immediate and full energy sanctions, oil, coal and gas. We move as quickly as we can move all together. The important thing is that we are all together, we are all united. I think it's a fantastic step in the right direction to make it ever more difficult for Russia to fund this war of aggression in Ukraine. Well, all member states are determined to move away from Russian energy dependency. Over the past twenty, thirty years, nations have built infrastructure which has been greatly reliant upon Russian energy sources. And we're moving very rapidly away from that. For some member states, it's a little easier. For other member states, it is actually physically more difficult because of lack of ports, lack of infrastructure. But everyone is moving in the same direction.
As a representative of a Baltic country, do you feel reassured that actually economic reasons seem to take over and not necessarily fight against them?
I see that we still, three months after the start of the war, we have gone sanction after sanction after sanction, ever tighter, ever tighter. Notwithstanding the fact that the sanctions also negatively affect us as European Union member states, we're still determined to stop the flows of money to Moscow. And the unity is there. Thank you very much.
Good morning. So after lengthy discussions yesterday, we finally reached an agreement. And I was positively surprised because when we went into the room, the signs were not that great. But everybody was very constructive and I'm happy that we reached the agreement. But of course, we also have to discuss already the seventh package because things are not going any better in Ukraine. And as long as the war is going on, there is no peace. Ukraine hasn't won the war, we haven't done enough. And of course, we talked about, you know, pushing Ukraine for peace. That there are signs that the peace could be the ultimate goal. But we had very intense discussions about this. And it's only up to the Ukrainians to say what kind of peace they are able to live with. And also, we have to give them all the military support so that they can defend themselves. Because the peace can't be the ultimate goal. Even if there's peace, the atrocities for those territories that are conquered will continue. So if we want to end the human suffering, we also have to push the aggressor back to its borders.
Will you discuss the gas matter today?
Not today, no. We discussed it briefly already yesterday. But gas is of course much more difficult than oil already was. All the next sanctions will be more difficult. Because so far, they have only hurt Russians. But now, they are also having effects on Europeans. And that's why it's much more politically difficult to decide those things. So we will not discuss gas today. We will discuss repower and energy issues. We will discuss defence and of course, the food security as well, which is very much connected to the war in Ukraine. I think that the gas has to be in the seventh package. But I'm really... Aber ich bin auch realistisch. Ich denke, es wird nicht sein.
Ihr denkt, der Zeitraum ist abgelaufen? Die Gasbrone stoppt jetzt, es gibt auch noch mehr Probleme? Ist es besser, wenn sie nicht mehr Gas haben? Ist es besser für die EU, dass sie den ersten Schritt trifft?
Ja, was wir machen, wir fokussieren uns auf die zusätzlichen Gasanträge. Und auch gestern Abend haben wir über die Repower der EU gesprochen, wie man die notwendige Energie für die Europäische Union bekommen kann. Dafür haben verschiedene Länder verschiedene Probleme. Aber natürlich ist das Sorge mit dem Gas, dass Russland nicht nur den Niederlanden, sondern auch Denmark wechseln wird. Und vielleicht wird das so gehen, dass die Russen die Sanktionen auf Gas setzen.
Heute werden Sie als NATO-Staat in Russland diskutieren. Was erwarten Sie aus dieser Diskussion?
Ich erwarte die Unigkeit und auch die Entscheidung, Dinge zusammenzunehmen. Was ich mit diesem meine, ist, dass es militärische Kapazitäten gibt. Große und große militärische Kapazitäten, die kein einzelnes Land selbst kann. Und jetzt, dass alle Länder gesagt haben, dass sie ihre Verteidigungsverluste um 2% erhöhen, dann stellt sich die Frage, für was es wirklich ausgegeben wird. Und ich denke, zum Beispiel die Luftverteidigung, um eine größere Fläche zu beschützen, ist etwas, was wir zusammen tun können, gemeinsam kaufen können. Also erwarte ich, dass diese Diskussion nicht so viel bezüglich des nationalen Interesses, sondern des europäischen Interesses als einziges, bezüglich der Verteidigung ist. Es ist ein Kompromiss. Wenn ich zwischen einem Kompromiss und überhaupt keine Sanktionen hätte, dann denke ich, es ist ein fairer Kompromiss. Und ich muss sagen, dass jeder sehr konstruktiv um die Tische war, um die Lösung zu finden. Also denke ich, das war das Beste, was wir konnten bekommen. Und wie ich gestern gesagt habe, ich war sehr skeptisch, dass wir einen Vereinigungsgespräch erreichen werden. Also das ist das Positive, was wir getan haben. Okay, danke.
Guten Morgen. Wir sind in der Nacht, es ist verhandelt worden. Hauptthema natürlich: der Rusland-Ukraine-Konflikt. Die Sitzung war auch geprägt von den Telefonaten, die geführt worden sind, mit Präsident Putin. Olaf Scholz, Emmanuel Macron, ich haben über unsere Eindrücke informiert. All das, was da besprochen worden ist und was es für Möglichkeiten gibt in Fragen der Konfliktlösung. Darüber hinaus dann der Beschluss des Ölembargos. Eine Maßnahme, die mit Sicherheit auch für die Mitgliedstaaten an sich schmerzhaft sein wird. Aber man muss realistisch sein, die Schmerzen, die wir leiden, sind nicht im Vergleich dazu, die die ukrainische Bevölkerung zu erleiden hat. Heute das nächstwichtige Thema: die Ernährungsversorgungssicherheit. Wir werden heute mit dem Präsidenten der Afrikanischen Union diskutieren. In vielerlei Hinsicht Heikel auf der einen Seite, weil Nordafrika bedroht ist, wenn die Exporte aus der Ukraine nicht stattfinden, in der Frage der Ernährungssicherheit. Und auf der anderen Seite, weil die Afrikanische Union sich neutral verhält in der Frage der Vorurteilung des Konflikts, der Aggression der russischen Föderation gegen die Ukraine. Und darüber hinaus wird heute auch das Thema Verteidigung ein wichtiger sein. Das heißt, wir werden uns stärker abstimmern in der Europäischen Union. Mit der gemeinsamen Außen- und Sicherheitspolitik ist die Europäische Union auch ein Sicherheitspartner. Wir sorgen in Friedensmissionen, sei es in Mali oder in Unterstützung auch der NATO, innerhalb des Kosovo für Frieden auf der Welt. Und jetzt geht es auch um die Frage der Aufrüstung der europäischen Staaten. Auch Österreich hat ja beschlossen, sein Verteidigungsbudget zu erhöhen. Und das alles jetzt in einen Einklang zu bringen und auch europäisch abzustimmen. Das werden heute die Themen sein. Es war gestern schon ganz klar, und ich sage es auch heute wieder, es wird das Gasembargo kein Thema sein. Es hat auch Olaf Scholz klargestellt. Gas verhält sich ganz anders in der Frage der Versorgungssicherheit aus Öl. Man kann Öl viel leichter kompensieren, wenn man russisches Öl verzichtet. Da gibt es dann technische Probleme, die wurden gelöst mit Viktor Orban. Bei Gas verhält es sich ganz anders. Daher wird Gasembargo oder das Gasembargo auch bei dem nächsten Sanktionspaket kein Thema sein. Es ging hier um technische Detailfragen. Russisches Erdöl bedeutet auch eine besondere Form, der Art, es zu raffinieren. Das ist eine technische Voraussetzung auch in Ungarn oder auch in anderen Ländern wie zum Beispiel Tschechien. Tschechien war bedroht davon, dass 30% seiner Dieselbestände plötzlich nicht mehr vorhanden wären, die es aber täglich braucht. Das heißt, hier gab es Kompromisslösungen, die sind gefunden worden. Und bis man halt einen Kompromiss findet, kann es auch ein wenig dauern. Und wenn man genau hinschaut, wir waren früher fertig als bei manchen anderen Räten. Das liegt daran, dass diese Länder nicht auf die Zahlungsbedingungen von Gazprom eingegangen sind. Die OMV hat hier gute Gespräche und konstruktive Gespräche geführt mit Gazprom. Wir haben den gleichen Druck nachher. Wir füllen unsere Speicher weiter auf. Das ist notwendig, um für den Winter vorzusorgen. Das heißt, ich mache mir hier derzeit keine Sorgen. Dankeschön. Danke schön.
Please, please.
Good morning, Peter Coe. Good morning, Peter.
We are keeping.
What is your reaction to last night?
Well, I was very pleased last evening that this decision was taken. It's a significant decision in terms of the banning of the importation of Russian oil into the European Union and really accounting for a very significant volume of Russian oil. And that will hit Russia. And I think clearly there were significant challenges for some member states, which had to be taken into account, given their dependency. I think it was genuine... Since the beginning of this war, the actions of Vladimir Putin has united Europe more than ever before. And I was always struck at the first round of sanctions, at the unanimity and the quickness of that unanimity. And that's following through. Now we're at the sixth round of sanctions, which as you go from round to round, it becomes more challenging. And oil and gas are particularly challenging, given the dependency on Russian oil and gas of some member states. What is very clear though is that we are at a watershed moment in terms of the European Union's dependency on Russian oil and gas. Because side by side with the sanctions package last evening, we began discussions on the energy package, the REPO EU, which is looking really to a more sustained and fundamental break in that dependency on Russian gas and oil. And if you dovetail that with our climate change agenda, it is a watershed moment in terms of fossil fuels in general, which will make for fairly rocky territory over the next number of years in terms of pricing around fossil fuels. We cannot get away from that. But on the other hand, what's clear from the presentation from the President of the Commission is that there's a need to double down on renewables. And a lot of focus from the Commission now on the permitting systems within member states, including our own, in terms of renewable energy. And the need to get offshore wind projects in place much sooner than would have been the anticipated timeline for offshore wind energy projects. So that's something that in the round is a significant issue. But last evening was good to get unanimity again on this question, to get agreement, and people worked hard to do that.
You spoke about rocky times ahead, Peter. Does this mean that we've seen made permanent now high prices for diesel and petrol at the pumps for the foreseeable future? And what does that mean in terms of knock-on inflation and...
Well, I think what I mean, recommend the best choice of words, well, yeah, one is looking at a different era now in terms of pricing around fossil fuels. The war has really exacerbated this and created huge pressure. And there's no doubt in my mind that part of Putin's strategy was to create an energy crisis and also then to create a food crisis. And that will be discussed now this morning. There's really concern, we're meeting with the President of the African Union, Rekki Sal, will speak to the meeting this morning. There's real concern, if you combine the impact of the war with drought in the Horn of Africa, we are facing into very challenging times around food security and famine across the Middle East and Africa. And that is an issue that is of huge concern in many member states and in terms of the situation in Africa and indeed the Middle East, just back from Lebanon. It's a big concern. There was a lot of discussion last evening around how we can get grain out of Ukraine and different routes being suggested. But it's all very, very difficult. And a very significant humanitarian crisis still awaits us in respect of the food dimension. And the war has really made that much, much worse.
And what is your message to Irish consumers now? That they have to get used to high prices and maybe do their best to use less?
Well, I think we're going to work very hard to create alternative forms of energy. Obviously, in the renewable piece, we've done well in Ireland in terms of electricity and renewables. We've got to move much faster now to the end of this decade. We will do everything we can to alleviate the pressures on consumers. But if you look at the EU power initiative and communication, it's very, very clear that if you reduce permanently Europe's dependence on Russian gas and oil, that has implications for the global market over time. Now, look, there will be a lot of experts analyzing that. There'll be a lot of shifts in that over the next number of years. But it will be challenging. There's no point in saying anything other than that it will be challenging.
Can consumers look forward to any further help from the government before the budget? Or is it something that they will have to wait?
It will be at the budget. And I think also I'm very mindful of the fiscal reports, the Shuslan Council's report this morning. And as I have said, we have initiated exploratory discussions with the social partners around what's collectively the best way as a country to respond to this unique and very challenging set of circumstances, which has created very difficult cost of living issues for people on the ground. And we acknowledge that. So I think we have to be really strategic in terms of how we respond to that. And that's why we've commenced these exploratory talks with unions around pay, but also around other measures in terms of services and how we can, around childcare, education, health and housing in particular, that we can arrive at an agreement that doesn't make the situation worse from an inflationary point of view.
Some record profits generated by electricity companies last year. And we've seen the British impose a windfall tax. The tarnisher said the government would keep an eye on that. Does that now come into the equation in terms of the budget?
Our situation is somewhat different to the UK's. And we will assess that in the round and what makes sense overall in terms of a sustainable market for us in Ireland. We import a lot of fossil fuels. We're not exactly masters of our own destiny in that regard. I think the most important thing we can do as a country is to double down on renewables and really get moving on the timelines around offshore wind. That's the big game changer for Ireland over the next decade, no doubt about that. Because that ultimately by the mid-2030s would enable Ireland to become an exporter as opposed to a chronic importer of fossil fuels at the moment.
Thank you very much indeed.
Dzień dobry. Trzy główne tematy na dzisiaj: to bezpieczeństwo żywnościowe. Zaczęliśmy krótko o tym trzeba rozmawiać. Ja pokazałem też możliwość polskie. Pokazałem ile Polska już dzisiaj robi, aby zwiększyć eksport zboża z Ukrainy i ile jeszcze możemy zrobić, zwłaszcza jeśli byśmy byli wsparci przez partnerów europejskich. Drugi temat to bezpieczeństwo i obronność. I tutaj z ogromną satysfakcją muszę odnotować, że uzupełnione zapisy konkluzji uwzględniają rolę NATO. To jest to, co bardzo mocno podkreślamy. Oczywiście dla wszystkich rola NATO jest istotna. Ale to, że wszelkie aspekty europejskiej polityki obronnej muszą być częścią szerszego sojuszu, najsilniejszego sojuszu wojskowego w historii świata, to bardzo ważne. I to udało się również do konkluzji wpisać. Będziemy o tym dzisiaj też dyskutować. I trzeci temat to kwestie związane z energią. Nikt nie chce kupować energii od Rosji. Rosja, barbarzyński kraj, kraj na którym z żadnej mierze nie można polegać, okazała się nie tylko partnerem niegodnym zaufania, ale okazała się państwem zbrodniczym. Dlatego dyskutujemy o tym, jak w najszybszy sposób odejść nie tylko od węglowodorów rosyjskich, takich jak węgiel czy ropa, ale także w dalszej perspektywie, co podkreślają niektóre kraje członkowskie, zwłaszcza Niemcy, Austria, w dalszej, w dalszej perspektywie także od gazu. Dziękuję bardzo.